Committee meeting. We'll start with roll call. Juan C. Fuentes.
Saul Olivas.
Jennifer Norrell.
Amy Engel.
Jalita Martinez.
And we do have public comment. Alex Arroyo.
Good evening, Curriculum Committee. Alex Arroyo, 13 Fortuna Grove Street in Aurora. I'm here to speak about the three-year-old literacy tournament later on this month. I'm here to answer any questions you may have. I'll be in the audience if you need me. And I think their live stream is now in Mexico and they're watching to see the presentation. So, thank you.
Anybody else?
No, that was it.
That was it? Awesome. Well, I'm so excited. Today, our first presentation is the Johnson Elementary School Improvement Plan. Presenting today on behalf of their school are Principal Inez Sem and Assistant Principal Courtney Bissell.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Inez Sem, and I'm the principal at Johnson, and I have Whitney.
I'm Courtney Bissell. I'm the Assistant Principal at Johnson.
We are here to share our plans, our highlights from last year, and our plan for this year. So, we will start with our highlights from last year. So, as you can see there, we had some huge improvement from, for last year. Our reading, 51% of our students met and exceeded. And our math, mathematics was 72%, which was super high. So, we were very proud of our students. 97% of our third graders improved in their writing, because that was one of our focus areas. And then, we ended the school year at 96%. So, for our attendance. So, we were super high. We kind of surpassed the state 95. So, that's a celebration that we did with our students within assembly and awards and stuff. For our ODRs, that's Office Referrals. We actually were super low on that for our students getting Office Referrals. So, 91% of our students received one or less. So, that means building community and relationship what our students really paid off last year. And then, another celebration that we have, 41 of our students reached English proficiency. That means they exited out of access testing. We were happy about that, too. The majority of those students were fourth graders. So, here is our data from last year. We broke it down by grade level. As you can see, our mathematics is our strength. We did an amazing job there from Common Formative Assessment, which is standard-based, focusing on what the teachers are teaching in the class. And then, our Expected Growth for Math. They actually transfer over is super high. Fourth grade, 80%. Fifth grade, 73%. And then, our IAR, which is grade level at the end of the year, what they are expected to know by their standard. And it was pretty high, too. We need to work a little bit on our fourth and fifth grade, but that is still moving forward in our progress. And then, our reading is the area that is kind of our weakness, area for improvement. Our CFAs, as you can see, is strong. That means we're teaching the standards, and the teachers are focusing on those standards, but it's not transferring over to our IAR. So, that's an area that we need to really focus on, and that's what we're going to be talking about today with our goals.
So, our first goal, as Inez mentioned, focuses in the area of writing. We know when we look at the IAR and the rigor that is associated with what our third graders are expected to do. We knew that we really wanted to focus on teaching third graders how to write paragraphs, how to write cohesive paragraphs, really focusing on writing strategies. And we measure this using our Rita Rubrik. And we really want our teachers to focus on explicit modeling of the writing process. What do good writers do? Showing students exemplars of what, what good writing looks like. And we really want students to self-assess themselves on their own writing so that they understand how to get to the next level. Our second goal is looking at operational excellence through the lens of students who receive Office Referrals. We really believe in restorative practices and making sure that all the students have an opportunity to learn and grow from any mistakes that they make. So, we really focus on having our students receive one or less Office Referral. And Inez mentioned building community and building relationships. We do that through quarterly community meetings, Second Step announcements each morning, quarterly assemblies to really focus on the good things that students are doing. And then, really focusing on our support with MTSS for students who might be showing some difficulty with their behavior and really making connections with other students and, and teachers. And then, really focusing on how we can help our students know and understand our raw expectations so that they can go through the day feeling successful. Our next operational excellence goal deals with attendance. We were exceptionally proud last year that our attendance was above 96%. So, we reformed our goal a little bit to really push ourselves to have 96% attendance this year. And so, we do that in several ways. We know the teacher is the front line with dealing with student attendance, but we also send letters home, have weekly attendance meetings with the administrators and our attendance clerk. And we really focus on targeting those students with the chronic absenteeism so that we can really support the families in figuring out what it is that they need to be successful and hooking them up with the resources they need to get their students to school.
It's a lofty goal, but you guys already did it once.
We did. I think we can do it again.
All right. For our student achievement, so we're going to be focusing on Level Three for our students, 80% of our students for mathematics. We saw that last year it really worked focusing on those students. And how we get that Level Three is the production from math. Math actually gives us a little idea of how our students will do on the IAR. So, that is where we're taking our data to help our students to kind of reach Level Four and Level Five. So, with that, we're going to be doing small group instruction focusing on their skills. We use a lot the iXL support that is built into with math, with the skill that they need. iReady has its own, like, individualized lessons, which is amazing for our students to work on to really target the areas they need. Plus, we offer tutoring. So, that's one of our goals for the student achievement. We have another student achievement that will be the reading. As I mentioned, that is our area of improvement that we need to really focus on. Students are showing grow. It's not that they're not, but we want them to meet and exceed. We want them to be at a higher level with that. So, we're really, we've been talking with our school leadership team, like, what could we do? So, we're really going to focus more on guided reading. We're realizing that it's not tight enough. So, that's what we're going to be focusing on this year, to really focus on how we're delivering the reading, how we're supporting our students with their comprehension skill. A lot of our students at Johnson, they are able to read fluently and decoding and all of that. So, that's not our focus of really getting them to the next level of comprehension, which is more the abstract, if you will. And then, the next one is, again, student achievement, is our vocabulary. So, we're realizing part of reading is vocabulary. So, we're going to be focusing on fourth and fifth grade students and helping them develop vocabulary skills that will help them when they see those big words in IAR and they're not sure what it is. We're going to try and provide those resources so they could identify what it means, the prefix, the suffix, knowing the root word. So, that is another thing that the fourth and fifth grade team agreed, that let's support our students with that so we could improve their reading also. And that's what we have for this year. Any questions for us?
Questions? I just want to say you guys have done an excellent job. You know the areas that you need to improve on, and you've got a plan. So, thank you. Good job.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The Simmons Middle School Improvement Plan is our next presentation. Here with us today are Principal Michelle Patterson and Assistant Principal Nelson Granville.
Good evening. We are Simmons, and we're minus one. I just wanted to mention that. Mr. Loz, he's with us in spirit. We're excited to be here tonight to discuss with you and highlight some of the great things that are going on at Simmons.
We can go with that slide if you want.
I was going to say we. That's okay. We, we're fine. Okay, so, some of the highlights that we have, we're happy to share, as always. 53% of our students met in math-projected growth and reading. 67.9% of our students met in math-projected math growth. 56.4 of our English language learners met their reading goal. And we also had 10 students to exit the, because of the access test that exit that program. So, we're excited about that. Those numbers are a little bit higher for us this year. 48% of our children with disabilities met their reading goal. 100% of our students have all received social-emotional lessons in our program Second Step. And we remain Essa ISB commendable designation.
So, for building wide data for last school year, so, Common Formative Assessments predict how we're going to do in math and IAR assessments. So, a prime example of this is when Common Formative Assessments made, predicted a growth of 57%. And we actually got a growth of 62.5%. We exceeded the expectations in this case. And this shows how well teachers, leadership team, and admin teams work together to achieve the student results.
And so, our goal number one, educational equity. We've said that by June 2025, Simmons students will increase the academic success rate by 5% for all students as measured by percent of students receiving a passing grade on the Quarter Four Report Card. And so, how we intended to get there is that we're going to be looking at all of those grade reports to identify those students who have been at risk. We're looking at, of course, our children with disabilities, our CWDs, and our EL learners to make sure that we're honing in on what it is that they need. We've also asked our counselors to pull those report cards and look at those. And look, and look at the kids who could be failing or close to and near failing grades. We've also asked for surveys. We want them to look at that, give us all that academic and social-emotional supports. We have after-school tutoring, as has been mentioned before, math and reading intervention. We have those data meetings. We look at all the data. We have our weekly MTSS meetings. Those are multi-tiered systems of support to determine more of what the students need. And then, we all have what's something we've especially made just for Simmons. It's our pride cards. And the pride cards are the participation, respect, integrity, determination, and excellence. And students who are meeting those goals and achieving, they are rewarded monthly for those. They, there are a level of cards. They're pink, they go from green, they go all the way up in the levels. And we acknowledge them, and we appreciate them for what it is they're doing and letting them know that this is pride. You are a prideful student.
So, our second goal is operational excellence. So, by June 2025, chronic absenteeism will be reduced by 4%. So, our belief is every student, every day, on time. No exceptions. So, our action plan is making those daily phone calls to parents by office staff, teachers, support staff, and building admin to increase attendance. We have to show families and students that we matter, that attendance matters to us, and that is important. Also, rewarding those students that have perfect attendance. We have to reward the good students, but also, we have to reward those students that are having issues with attendance but are showing improvement. The other part is admin, building admin, and counselors. We'll meet with students with academic, with, with attendance issues to create goals and monitor their attendance. At, at the beginning, is they have to show improvement until they have reached the overall goal. One important thing here is teachers, they used to use, they have to use data to communicate with parents of current students and students with, with chronic absenteeism. That is another point, is building those relationships and showing parents that we care about our kids and their future. And when everything else has been done, something that we need to do as admin is, if the students are not coming to us, then we're going to them. We're going to go to their houses, we're going to go and talk to the families, see what's actually happening, and how can we support them for their students to start coming on time every day to school.
Next is student achievement. 70% or more of our Simmons students will meet those growth targets. And so, I'll speak to both the reading and math. There'll be different slides, so we can speak, they're pretty much the same. So, what we have in place in the building, we have our SLT, that's that large group, School Leadership Team. We have our IOT. Those are the instructional leadership people who sit on the team and the PLCs. So, it trickles down. We come together as a large group, state the goals that are coming from what we're discussing here at district level. That trickles down to the instructional coaches and then down to the PLCs. And this are the discussions that they have in their meetings twice weekly because it's a school-wide effort. From there, we basically use the spotlight strategies that the coaches have, things like predicting main ideas they have presented to the faculty and give that information to everyone so that we can make sure that it's school-wide. And we implement those school-wide vocabulary words. You should see in the rooms when you come that these words are posted, even in the PE classroom. Everybody has ownership. The PECs, PLCs engage regularly, twice weekly in those conversations and on the Late Start Tuesdays. The administrators, when we walk through, we look for the look-fores, these things that we've asked and talked about. And then, since we are middle school, we know that it's never too early to start planning for college and careers. So, we start those conversations then, and we schedule assembly speakers, what have you. But we want them to know that the time is now. You start now. The next goal is the same as everything that I've just said, it's just math. So, there's the same thing. We use the same procedures, the same people. We have the same strategies. The coaches still present, and we have speakers coming in and still talk. But the difference in math, I will say, is that we talk more about STEM and STEAM because that's very important, many opportunities for our students. And those are some of the great things that we have going on at Simmons and looking forward to continuing. Any questions, thoughts, comments?
Quick question. Andy, if you, or we're back here, we can go to Slide Three. I'm just looking at the Formative Assessment and the NWE Map Expected Growth and the IAR Meets or Exceeds.
Yes.
And that column at the end kind of puts me to thinking about what's happening between the CFAs, the NWA map, and then when they're actually taking the IAR. Something's not connecting, right? Because I see that we're going in the right direction, but then, when we take the IAR, something's happening.
And you're absolutely right. Thanks for the question. It lets us know that we need to go back then and look at the rigor of what it is on those CFAs because it is supposed to be a predictor of what we can look for. So, that's where we are now, and it's good to have the data so that we know those things that we need to look at and go back in and question and pay more attention to. A very good question. Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have our Elementary Literacy Curricular Resource Pilot with Executive Director for Curriculum and Instruction, Elalia Valdez, filling us in.
Okay, good evening. I will go ahead and get us started. The first slide, please. Let me begin by sharing with you the reason that we're going to go ahead and complete a literacy pilot. The current curricular materials that are being used in grades K through five are being phased out by the publisher. So, that has created a need for us to identify curricular materials for this coming-up school year. So, in taking a look at the first steps for the literacy pilot, we identified the Illinois Language Arts requirements that must be met as well as continuing to look at our dual-language principles that guide our current dual-language framework. In addition, it's important for us, as we do this literacy pilot, to take into account the different stakeholders. And we intend to do that through surveys, input from our curriculum council, as well as taking input from the actual pilot while it's being completed. This slide and the next one will provide an outline of the different dates, as well as the tasks that are, have already either been completed or are intended to be completed by the time that we come and make the recommendation. This first slide gives you information on some of the tasks that we have already completed. So, we've already taken a look at what are the requirements for completing a literacy pilot that is going to both take a look at English and Spanish language instruction. And that is that we take a look at the requirements for what the state of Illinois has provided, as well as taking a look at the dual language. We have completed that, and by completing those two reviews, we identified that there are some initial criteria that has to be met. And in order to go ahead and begin the process of identifying which vendors we will bring forward, we have taken a look at those two and identified that as the starting point. So, we have looked at different vendors, both nationally and statewide, and we have selected, based on the initial criteria, by the research and by the principles, those that will be moved forward to the next phase. Then, the next steps that we are going to go ahead and complete is we will bring, be bringing forward the vendors to the curriculum council, as well as other stakeholders, so that they can review the materials. We are going to go ahead and have teachers identify which curricular materials are going to go ahead and move forward. We will have two of those materials be piloted. Through the piloting process, we will gather input, and we will be back to make the recommendation of which of those two curricular materials was the actual recommendation from the pilot. So, that is our intention with the literacy pilot for grades K through five. What questions can I answer for you?
How many teachers are we expecting to pilot this new curriculum?
We have identified that there will be representation from all of our buildings, and we do have 14 buildings that are going to go ahead and be piloting. So, the representation will have to include the monolingual English, because we do have some classes that are monolingual English, as well as dual language, as well as the opt-out. So, that's the category of representation. I don't have the exact number for you because it depends on who actually signs up for that. Yes, there will be a survey that will be administered so that we get the data from the teachers in terms of, before we go ahead to the next phase, which is to bring the vendors in, what is the teacher lens in terms of what we want to be looking at? Because we identified two areas, which is the Illinois requirements and then the guiding dual-language principles that we have implemented here in our district.
And I'm just going to piggyback on this because I think for primary grades are very important as we're looking for a new curriculum, right? We, we also just looked at reading and writing. So, we have to also make sure that those components are really in the curriculum that we move on or, or looking at, but also make sure that we're looking into phonics, reading, and writing because at the primary level, that is the base of everything. And I think with a lot of the current curriculum, there are a lot of, some of us have done, or there was a lot of that, lacking of that. So, I hope that moving forward, we really look at that phonics, we look at the writing, and we look at the reading because all that goes real well together.
And thank you very much for the question and the comment. As part of the initial phase, we did take a look at the Illinois requirements. And one of the documents that we reviewed is the Illinois Comprehensive Literacy Plan, which has that component very clearly outlined as one of the areas that needs to be taken into consideration when adopting materials.
Okay, and this is a two-phase type comment slash question. So, obviously, Easter is a highly mobile, the students kind of come and, and go, you know, to some degree. So, that is number one. So, what are you doing to plan for students that are dropping into the program later on in, you know, say, they don't really start in our district in the dual-language program? What, what are we doing for the materials for that? Is that built into this? And then, say they fall behind. They're in our dual-language program, they started in our district, but they just fall behind. So, are you building some facets into this curriculum that would help with the, with the kids catching up?
So, two, two things. The, the guiding principles that we use for the dual-language program, that comes from the Center for Applied Linguistics. And one of the tenants there is to ensure that when we're taking a look at curricular materials, we're also taking into consideration the students that are accelerated, the students that are on grade level, and the students that are needing that, those potential interventions because there are gaps. So, in, in the area of like the review, the Cal makes a recommendation for that. And that's one of the documents that we took into consideration when we spoke with the initial vendors. In addition to that, the Illinois Comprehensive Literacy Plan also takes into consideration what is it that we're going to do when our students have learned what we have already put in front of them, or they have not learned it, even after we have gone ahead and, and completed the teaching. And so, those interventions are part of what is being looked at as we take a look at the curricular materials that we're going to bring forth.
Okay. All right.
Well, thank you very much for your questions.
Thank you. Next up is information about the driver's education simulation waiver. You may recall that this topic came to committee in July for review. We discovered that additional components were needed for submission to the state, and we want to make sure that we have everything they need for consideration. So, we brought it back to the agenda. At our October 7th board meeting, we will hold a public hearing. And after that, then, we'll be able to submit the full and comprehensive packet to ISB for approval. I just wanted to make sure you saw that that was in there. Any questions about that?
No.
Mm-hmm.
We have brought on that, so, okay.
Next up, we have the MTSS Behavior District Campaign with Jalita Martinez, Associate Superintendent for School Leadership.
Thank you. And then, Andy is working on, on pulling up the presentation, but I know that we have it in front of us, so I'll get started if that's okay. Oh, you're right. Yeah, you're right. Okay.
No, I don't see that. Okay.
All right. There we go. So, MTSS, as you know, is a comprehensive framework designed to support students' academic, social, behavioral development. And so, while we historically concentrated on the academic aspect, this year, we're shifting our focus to include the behavioral. our focus to include the behavioral side of the MTSS triangle with a specific emphasis on fostering respect. And so, building on the focus identified by our staff, our administrators over the summer, and inspired by the powerful motivation behind each student's journey, we've developed this campaign slogan that will be visible across the district. And so that is "An EAD 131: Respect Guides Us; Our Why Drives Us." Our campaign will include messaging that identifies some of the core competencies that are foundationally essential for building respectful environments. Research continues to show us that respect is a highly valued quality within communities and organizations, including schools, and many studies highlight several core themes and competencies and skills essential for demonstrating respect that include courage, empathy, kindness, self-control, embracing differences among those. We've also developed a mantra that will be integrated into our universal systems to promote respect by focusing on the foundational skills that I just mentioned, as essential for cultivating a truly respectful environment. And so a core aspect of respect lies in how we regard others, as well as, like I said, empathy. So these will be reflected in the framework that you're gonna see. Castle is a collaborative for academic, social, and emotional learning in education, and it provides a framework that helps schools integrate SEL into the curriculum and teaching practices, focusing on the five core competencies that you see there highlighted with red, green, and yellow in the center. And the goal is to enhance students' academic performance, well-being, and social skills. Our theme on purpose and respect integrates seamlessly with Castle, the SEL framework that you see here, as it highlights the importance, again, of those core competencies, empathy, kindness, and intentional behavior, all which contribute to a safe and inclusive community. Next, oh, thank you. As you know, we've embedded the elements of inside out into our theme this year. While we've historically focused on teaching behaviors by location, we thought a seamless tie to emotions will help us to focus on how to exhibit respect during different emotional experiences. So this will be more impactful than merely defining respect by location within schools, which is what we have normally done. Emotions often drive behavior, and teaching students to navigate their feelings with respect ensures that they make positive choices regardless of where they are. Next slide. And when they start to practice these, even, you know, respect, even when they're frustrated, excited, or upset, they develop critical skills for self-regulation and empathy. So what you see here is a sample of what we have been working on. We are identifying what respect looks like by emotion and by grade band. And so in pre-K, respect looks like what you see here when I'm feeling angry. And we're developing it for anger, we're developing it for joyful, for all of those key emotions. And so the other component that we're including with what it looks like or sounds like is what does respect look like when someone else is experiencing those emotions? And so that's building that empathy piece. So here's some samples of what we've been working on in terms of signage for the campaign and what we wanna see in the schools. And so it would look something like this, when I feel joyful, respect looks like what it sounds like. And when someone else is experiencing anger, this is what I can do to show empathy, to show respect towards the other person in our environment. And so what we're doing now is the principals are working with students to fine-tune these and to make sure that the artwork that we create resonates with the students, and so the students might wanna help and have say in what they look like and what these posters look like by grade bands. So Tier One, as you know, is primary focuses on prevention and proactive strategies. And so this tier provides universal support to all students. It includes setting clear expectations for behavior, teaching social-emotional skills, and the behavioral expectations will be around respect, and they'll be explicitly taught, reinforced, using the curricular materials that we already have, which is Second Step and Satchel Pulse. And they'll be, the lessons are extracted to meet those foundational skills that you guys seen in the previous slides. We're gonna be working on finalizing our behavior matrices, so that we're differentiating office manage versus classroom manage behaviors. This is for the universal Tier One. Building incentives to support the positive behavior, administering Satchel Pulse as our universal screener, and creating the signage and the visual supports through the district, and we'd like to expand that as well in the billboards. Next slide. Tier Two, this is when our students aren't responding to Tier One interventions, which research shows that 80 to 90% of students should respond to Tier One, but when they're not and they need extra support, then we are going to provide that targeted support via small groups. We've established some preliminary entry and exit criteria for these small groups, with the group's facilitators being behaviorists and/or some of the school clinicians such as social workers, and again, extracting some of the resources we already have from Second Step and Satchel Pulse to focus more narrowly on some of those foundational skills that we're noticing the students are missing, and leading them to receive the intervention supports for Tier Two. And so we're gonna be looking at data frequently, because we wanna make sure that we are providing these supports as students need them, but also then those students who are gonna be receiving the supports, monitoring their progress. Tier Three is more individualized and intensive. These are the supports that we wanna provide and layer on for students who are not responding to the interventions provided at Tier Two. And so we are going to include more individualized, intensive interventions. We have, again, Second Step and Satchel Pulse, reteaching and reinforcing those strategies, but we also have other curricular materials already available to our clinicians, and then adding the layer of student trackers, being able to work with the students, work with the families, to help, you know, with a reduction, so that we can see a reduction in behavior for these students. And again, we'll be monitoring the progress, looking at the data very frequently. Any questions?
One thing that I just wanted to add is part of the Tier One strategy will be to go after, you know, really make sure that we are communicating with parents from a district level, because we wanna make sure that our families know that we are putting forth all of these supports and resources. If your student is not successful, we are really going to take a look at consistent measures in terms of redirecting behavior, disciplines that are issued, and that's a whole nother component that we didn't delve into tonight. But as far as documenting that and taking a strong stance on, you do have to respect adults in our environment. So we took the first stance on that at the high school with regard to physical contact. It is now time for us to take the next step as it relates to, you know, interactions with adults. And so as a part of this campaign, we really want our community to know that we're launching this, that it is organized, that it is uniform, we're gonna move in lockstep. And a piece of that is to put up, we have access to three billboards to be able to put our campaign up, so we draws an interest like we did when we had the attendance campaign. We wrapped the vans, so AJ's identified a couple of our vehicles that we can wrap, and that we can also utilize that. So if this committee feels that's okay, I really, that's the purpose behind really moving, because this is only gonna work if we're consistent and we do this as an entire system. Otherwise, it'll pit one building or one teacher against the next, and we have to move in unison. So we're looking to launch in October, but we're looking to really start to roll this out to staff and roll it out to our building admin already have it, but really talking about reinforcing this. We have to take a strong stance. Otherwise, it's just words on a page. So does the, do you guys support that campaign? And, okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, then we're gonna move forward, and we're gonna come back and talk more details about the discipline piece. We like to go with the positive first. Again, we teach children, that's what our job is, is to teach. And so we're gonna teach this portion and push that first, and then we'll come back to you with some of our lockstep moves as far as, and if this, if they aren't successful or they refuse to go by our system, what are we gonna do? So, thank you. Kudos to school leadership, they nailed this, and it was a great job, so thanks.
Our district is very excited to have the opportunity to participate in an international reading tournament. It's called the Great Reading Tournament, and the event encourages our students to read and accumulate minutes and climb an international leaderboard to compete. Students have access to more than 9,000 books in English and Spanish. These students compete with children in Mexico and other countries to log the most reading minutes, to enhance their reading comprehension skills, and do so in a fun and engaging way. The tournament is set up and managed through a platform called LightSale, and all of our K through eight classes have the option to participate. It runs, the tournament runs from November 1st through the 23rd, but our students and our staff will have access to that platform coming up in October, so they can start to get ahead of it, learn the platform, because that's always a piece of that, make sure they understand how it functions, and then get themselves psyched up. And we're really excited to get some advertisement out there, so our families can get engaged, so our teachers and schools all really understand it. And on top of it, not that this is the motivator, but there are big prizes available. Some of these individual students win prizes, classes win prizes, schools win prizes. It's pretty impressive.
I do have a question regarding, it says sign up for free by October 1st. I mean, after that, is there a fee, or is it still free for the students?
We've already opted into it, and I just was chatting with the individual today, he's so wonderful, and we are signed up for it already. That's, we're gonna get rostered. I just wanted to make sure that you guys felt that this was in line with everything we're doing, because I think it's a great opportunity.
Oh, I think it's a great opportunity. Thank you too, Mr. Arroyo, for helping with this and bringing it to the district.
Yeah, absolutely. The other thing I wanna say publicly is that we've seen, all of school leadership and curriculum instruction had an opportunity to look at the tool to determine before we said our kids were participating in this tournament, if it would be accessible. And one of the things was that was great, although pre-K's not gonna participate right now, they do have just a few, they have a smaller list of books that would be applicable to the students at that age. But one of the things that was really great is that it is a natural fit for our dual-language structure of our program. It also is a natural fit when we're talking about services for students who may come in and enter our schools late or mid-year, you know, to be able to have a teacher have that as a resource to assign. It interfaces really nicely with our devices, and it has great tools built in on every page. And so we even had student services as a part of this, so that even a student who didn't have the same functional abilities in terms of reading could have the books read to them. So there's a capacity for us to use this on a continuum of students based upon their own ability levels. And so we think that that is something that would be, something that would be a high, highly sought-after resource. So again, I wanted it to be optional for our teachers, because I didn't want one more thing. So teachers will have an opportunity to check it out, to let their kids do this independently, to do it as a class, optional for them. But one of the great things is if they have an opportunity to interface with the LightSale platform, if it is something that they feel that has value, then we would be willing to purchase it for those teachers and make it available for the district, because it's actually on the reasonable side. So we did ask about that, but right now, we're just gonna focus on the tournament and kinda actually looking at it. It's one thing to look at something and think it's great when we're in a meeting, but to actually see it in use and have people be able to use it is another thing. So right now, it looks great, and it really looks like an asset or something that we would be able to utilize. So, Amy, thank you.
Just a quick question also.
Thank you, Mr. Arroyo.
How does it go, like from, if you, those teachers there wanna participate with your class, like how do students log into minutes, or is it the students or the teacher?
Oh, it's a great question. The program actually monitors it directly. So the, it tracks the, it's all based on minutes, it's not number of books, and they use that to compare equitably between...
And they'll have all of our kids loaded already.
Yes, they will.
Yeah, they'll automatically be loaded, as much as they read, then they're winners. If they don't, then they're not. So it's not like a...
But they still win, though.
Not if they don't read.
That's, okay, you're right. Yeah, we want them to read, though. They're gonna read. When you see the books in there, it was really, really awesome. And there were some pre-K books, I think like 86 pre-K books were in there, but just not quite enough, it wasn't robust enough for that level yet, but we're so excited.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Great.
Next up is a request for an expansion of our universal screener that we just heard about, and it is coming from Megan McEwen Terry, Executive Director of Student Services. And just so you know, she's gonna talk a little bit about it here, and then this is going to action tonight.
Good evening. So we are seeking approval to expand the implementation of the Satchel Pulse Social Emotional Universal Screener to include grades K through two. So last year, we were successful in implementation of the assessment for grades three through 12, and so we are very excited to be able to expand that to all of our grade levels, K through 12. And so this addition would allow us to be able to gain valuable information related to our students' social, emotional strengths and areas of growth, as well as be aligned with our district focus on providing strong, multi-tiered layers of support for our students on both sides of the MTSS triangle. As stated, Ms. Martinez was stating earlier, with our district focus, Satchel Pulse is also aligned to Castle, which is the Collaborative for Academic, Social, and Emotional Learning. That also works well with Second Step, which is also aligned to Castle, and Satchel Pulse then allows us to be able to track individual student progress, as well as school and district progress over time. And there is a intervention library with lessons and interventions that can be used both individually and with small groups of students. So we are looking to, for the expansion, the cost would be $13,360. That will be coming from title funds, and we would be looking for a decision for tonight, so that we would be able to be ready to implement the screener for fall. Okay?
Thank you.
Any questions?
All right. Thank you so much. The last item on our agenda is the Included Enrollment and Attendance Update as of September 20th. We currently have 12,263 students enrolled.
So where is that as a comparison to last year?
Last year, we had 12,400 and something students, so we're pretty close. Just a little lower. Thanks so much. That's it, our meeting is adjourned at 6:48. Thanks.